Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first council work study session for the year for 2022. It is 6:00 PM on January 5th, and we're just going to go ahead and open this meeting up. We, I will allow for a round table at the end for anybody who'd like to share information. So let's step right into it, and the first item of business is the mayor pro tem. And I believe Charlie, you have this one, correct?
Yes, I went ahead and wrote this one up, and I just wanted a couple of, to provide a couple of introductory comments for council. In terms of the materials that are in there in the packet, the first page comes right out of your council governing handbook, which is also listed on the council page of the website for your reference. There's a link there. Then there are a couple of memos that we included, one from Mayor Johnson that was originally published early in 2020. But I call this kind of the practice of how I understand we've handled the mayor pro tem here in the past. So it's got a motion on it that is for a one-year motion, and that is our recommendation from the administration this evening. A one-year term for the mayor pro tem. And then there's a second memo, which came from me, originally modeled after an earlier memo from Aaron Berg. And that is more of the policy of how, how the mayor pro tem comes to be and what the RCW requirements are. And it talks a little bit more about the council handbook policy there. And it has a motion for a two-year term, and the council certainly has the ability to do a two-year term, a one-year term. And as you'll see, any other sort of term that you would like that's short of two years. But every two years, when a new council is seated, this is a discussion that you need to have, and you need to appoint somebody to this role. But I just wanted to provide those upfront comments, and then happy to take any questions on process if the council has any.
So are there any questions for Charlie?
I, I have, I guess, something to say about whether it should be one year or two year. And it's funny because I think the mayor pro term should be two years. But I also think that our committee terms should be for two years because both offer continuity that allows for you to fully immerse yourself into that particular committee. And then we'd only have to deal with this every other year. So that was my thought on one versus two.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
I have a comment to make. I go along with, with Charlie. I think it should be one year. We've got some new council members, and I think if they get one year under their belt, then they should have a shot at it. And change is always good. So I'll go along with, with the one year.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, hearing none. You have the option here to nominate if you like. I'll call for nominations. Or we can delay until the 12th. It's the council's decision.
I make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we, we make a motion for one-year term.
For a one-year term, okay. Do I have a second?
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Glenn.
Oh, okay. You can hear me. Okay, I'm not. Is this going, is this retroactive, or is this just going into this year?
Well, I guess it would be how you would state it, but I would look for some guidance on this. Charlie, do you have guidance on this?
Yes, my understanding is this would, this term would start now and go forward into the future. So a two-year term would be through '22 and '23, and a one-year term would be through '22. And then we would go through this process again at the beginning of '23.
Oh, okay, Charlie, and I appreciate your call today. I mean, it meant a lot to me. Does this need to be changing bylaws or candle, or council rules of rotation and not be arbitrary, or how does this go?
Yeah, the council rules are pretty flexible on this topic from my read of them. So this is something you may want to make more specific in the future. That would be a suggestion if and when we pull up the council rules for some editing. But at this point in time, the council rules, and you'll see it in the second memo. There's basically a direct quote from the council rules there that we must, because this is the beginning of a new biennium, appoint a mayor pro tem for '22 and '23 or such other term as the council may desire. So it's really up to the council at this point. You have that discretion.
Okay, I'm, I'm at a place where, you know, I've got a, a deal from the mayor and saying, oh, what, what do you want to serve on, blah, blah, blah. And somebody obviously wants to be mayor pro tem again this year. And, but I think we should make it a council policy that in the future, maybe after '22, maybe '23, it should be a policy to rotate. But, you know, that, that's, I'm only one out of seven, so I'm not going to push it, okay?
So there, there is a motion on the table. There was not a second, but there is a motion on the table to make the mayor pro tem a one-year term. I guess, Councilman Owen, my question to you would be, are you wanting to make just this particular year a one-year, whoever you appoint one year? Or do you want every year to have the option to select a mayor pro tem? So I didn't know if you heard me, Councilman Owen. What, what are you looking to do here? Are you wanting to make this? Did you want to make this just this year a one-year term? Or do you want it always to be a one-year term, every year that we reelect or elect a mayor pro tem?
I'd like it to be a one-year term in the future, then other people has a chance at it.
Okay, Mayor Julia, I too would like it to be, but starting in 2023, I don't want to change the rules in mid, midterms, okay? Thank you.
Okay. All right. So are there any other thoughts by the council here? What would you like to do? You have heard Councilman Owen's statement that he'd like to make it a one-year term. As I understand your statement, Councilman Allen, are you wanting to make the same change this year with Chuck? Or I'm kind of at a loss here as to what you're looking to do.
Oh, okay, if, if you listen, okay, I'm, I'm the second most senior council person. And I don't really want to be mayor pro tem. Someone really wants to be mayor pro tem for this year. But I think next year, we should have a policy where pro tem is only a one-year.
Okay.
A one-year, okay.
So I'm looking for feedback from the other council members. What are your thoughts on this?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Madoffin?
Yes.
I kind of like the idea, Chuck, that Chuck mentioned of, you know, one-year term. Because someone could still serve consecutively. There's no rules that would stay like, you know, if you're serving one year, that the next year you couldn't also be mayor pro tem. Is that correct? I mean, it's not like an elimination thing, like you can only be mayor pro tem one time. You could be mayor a few or three times, right?
That is correct, and we have had council members who have been reappointed. They served for a year, and then they were reappointed again by the council the following year. So it has happened. It has happened.
Okay.
And this is really at the discretion of the council, whatever the council wants to do.
Okay, I'll, I'll second Councilman Owen's motion.
Okay. All right. So, so we have a motion on the table to, it looks like we want to change the policy, and the policy would be changed up that every year we would look at either re-electing the mayor pro tem or elect a new mayor pro tem. Would that be, is that the verbiage? Is that the wording that you all would like? Does, does that work?
Yeah, appointing.
Appointed, okay, okay. All right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye or holding up your hand so I can see here?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign? Okay, so motion carries. So election will be every year. And Charlie, will you see to it that the policy is presented to the council either sometime within this month so that they can see it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're, we're still in need of a mayor pro tem. So I'm going to put it out there again. Are there any, any a motion to elect somebody, any nominations? What would the council like to do?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Sarah Diamond for mayor pro tem.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie to nominate Sarah Diamond. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Councilman Allen.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Does somebody else, would somebody else like to put another name out there? Okay, hearing none. We have on the table nomination of appointing Councilwoman Sarah Diamond to mayor pro tem for 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Sarah. Welcome to the position of mayor pro tem. Moving on to, you know, something I just realized is that I didn't do a roll call. So I'm just going to go through here and mention the people that I see here so that it's recorded. We have Councilman Sarah Diamond, Councilwoman Sarah Diamond, Councilman Joe Burns, Councilwoman Joellen Kestie, Councilman Nick Lavaca, Councilman Chuck Owen, Councilman Brendan McOffen, Councilman Glenn Allen. And that, that's our council. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Moving on to the equitable investment resolution, and Charlie, this is yours again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. And our goal tonight is to really keep this short. This is our first read, but we'd like to do a second read. We have the opportunity to hear from Will Honi from Skagit County. And he is really the subject matter expert in the region on this topic and definitely for the county. The county has passed a resolution along the lines of the one you see here, and you will have seen from the packet, if you've had a chance to look through it, that Will originally sent information to Mayor Johnson and requested that the city take a position, consider passing a resolution on this topic. So there's a lot of material that I included in the packet, and for tonight, we really just wanted to show it to you. Certainly, if you have any questions or comments or don't want to talk about it at the next meeting, we would love to hear those tonight, but for the most part, we recommend carrying that discussion into the next meeting with Will Honi from Skagit County joining us. And then potential action on this at the following meeting, which would be on the 26th. So just wanted to keep it brief tonight. So for council, if you've got anything for me this evening, you don't like this idea or something like that, you don't want to hear from Will in the future, that would all be very helpful information. Otherwise, I will continue to proceed at least to get you as much information as we can for your policymaking considerations. Any questions?
Okay, no questions or comments?
Is that in religion of the dam?
Correct, yeah. A little bit more background if you'd like. So Seattle City Light is in negotiations to renew their license with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, known as FERC. And as a part of that process, they have to negotiate with various stakeholders. They actually have multiple dams. They have the Gorge Dam, Diablo Dam, and Ross Dam that are all a part of their system. And in previous years, Puget Sound Energy did a similar, I believe they were doing a similar renewal of their, their license and committed to doing significant improvements on the Baker River for salmon habitat. This particular resolution would basically encourage, strongly encourage Seattle City Light to provide more investment in salmon recovery in the Skagit. And the work that Puget Sound Energy did also benefited the Skagit because Baker feeds the Skagit. Puget Sound Energy worked with a lot of the same partners. The request here is, is for Seattle City Light to essentially be an effective partner. And there's a long resolution, and like I said, Will is really the expert on a lot of this. But negotiations are ongoing with Seattle City Light. And so this resolution, if the council were to approve it, would be beneficial to those negotiations and showing that we're aligned with at least the county and potentially other entities in the region in asking Seattle City Light to improve salmon habitat on the Skagit.
So it was actually a pretty good report that was written up. Is there a reason why we would oppose this? I mean, it's not establishing where the funding would go or what would be done with the, how they would protect the environment or, or maybe dredge the river to help prevent flooding, to prevent flooding, different things like that. It's just saying that they maybe need to put some more skin in the game if they've got the dams up there. Seems like that's up in Seattle, of all places we'd want to do anyways.
Yes, that's essentially, you're, you're correct. It's a general policy statement. Certainly, there's no, no, you know, financial commitment by the city in terms of reasons why you wouldn't want to do it. I, 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 we recommend that you do it. But, you know, if you were looking for reasons not to do it, you might think about it as, you know, this is more of a regional issue, maybe not as much of a local issue, and maybe you don't feel that the Skagit is, that, that this kind of benefit on the Skagit would necessarily be a direct benefit to the city. But our recommendation and our argument to you is that we think it is.
Thank you, Charlie.
There's also, if, I don't know if anybody followed a lot of this over the, the summer, but there was a five-part King Five investigative series that I know that you can look up online and watch as well. That was, that was aired. And so that's, that's pretty interesting, too, and it'll give everybody a little bit of a background, too, as to kind of what's been going on.
I was fortunate enough to speak with a marine biologist earlier tonight. They gave me a decent clip of what was going on, and he's by no means a specialist in the Skagit or the salmon. But it sounds like there's no downside to asking them to do something to help get salmon around the dams. It seems like it might be a boon for us with fish in the next 10, 20 years, just to get more salmon going up the river.
Yeah, very good. Anything else? Any other comments, other questions? Okay, hearing none. This is just the first read, and this will be brought back to you next week for your opportunity to, to pass the resolution or not. Onto the third item, which, which is the potential resolution in opposition to the fully contained communities. And I believe that this is John Coleman, who's going to be taking this. I didn't see if he's on tonight. John?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Hi, John. Okay, there you are.
Hi, excuse me if I'm looking away from the screen. I've got two screens up. So with the memo in front of me here. So the fully contained communities is a, an issue that the Skagit County Board of County Commissioners has began a process of reviewing. So for many years now, the, the owner of some property around Avalon Golf Course has applied to the county to update the common plan, the county comp plan, to allow a fully contained community in that area. And it has been the, it has been the, the position of the city in the past to, to not support a fully contained community in the county. The county has rejected the, the proposals year after year. But this year, they've decided to docket it despite vast opposition to the proposal. In, so in a nutshell, what a fully contained community is, is a miniature city with no city government that would allow for housing and some commercial development in a defined area. It's, it's a, a fully contained community is kind of a strange thing. In the, in, in the Growth Management Act, it was not, there were not originally allowed in the Growth Management Act, but the act was amended several years later to allow for them, under pressure from developers who wanted to build these resort communities, and this was a way for them to be able to do so. If you think of Suncadia and several in Snohomish and King County, some have been derided, some have caused significant problems. And, you know, some people may like Suncadia. So there, there's a lot of different opinions on them. For all intents and purposes, though, it's, it's a housing subdivision without any urban services such as government fire. So it would be depending on county services to manage the urban area. And as is stated in the Growth Management Act, cities are the entities that are best managed, best to manage urban growth, not county governments. County governments don't have experience with high density. It's just, you know, there's a different perspective. So there's a lot of concern about the impacts of a fully contained community as well as, you know, can the city even manage them? The Growth Management Act doesn't necessarily have a great definition for what a fully contained community is. It just says that the, the county has to allow for, has to, has to allow for some commercial use as well as residential use and address concurrency. And so it's kind of a, kind of a broad definition within the Growth Management Act. What I can tell you is this proposal is brought, was brought to the county, and the county kind of broke it up into different parts and, and elected to, to docket a part of it. And if you read the, our proposed resolution closely, what it says is what the county is doing goes against the, the, the framework policies, adopted policies that the, the county, as well as the other cities within the county have for approving such changes to the comp plan. It's, the framework agreement says if there's going to be any changes to the county comp plan that affect countywide planning policies or urban growth area boundaries or population allocation, it has to go through the Skagit Council of Governments Steering Committee for approval and review before the county moves forward with it. So that's not exactly what the county is doing. They're, they're following a process that is, you know, from the city's perspective, is not meeting that framework agreement that the county has agreed to. The city of La Conner has already approved a resolution against fully contained communities. And the city of Mount Vernon has drafted one, and our resolution is just mostly cut and paste from the Mount Vernon one. They, they're, they're still reviewing it, so their council hasn't necessarily made a decision on it. But from what I understand, the, the Mount Vernon is against fully contained communities. They've been strongly against fully contained communities for, for this, for many years. And it's anticipated that that's going to be the case. In my memo, I mentioned that when the Skagit County Planning Department put this out for consideration about whether or not it should be put on their 2021 comprehensive plan amendment process, they received roughly 700 comments about fully contained communities. And I provided a link to all of those comments on the memo. 700, so it's, you know, close to 800 pages of document, of, of comments there. I went through the first 250 pages of that document, and I saw, besides the applicant, there was only two other people, two other people that commented that were in support of even docketing this. Not even saying approving it, but putting it on the docket for the county to even consider. So by putting it on the docket, it'll go through a review process in the planning commission, and they're doing a, an environmental impact statement on fully contained communities. And although we haven't seen anything about that yet, it's really been kind of blackout from the county as far as communication with the cities. We've literally heard nothing in the planning department. I don't know if that's the case. If the council or the mayor has heard anything, but there's, we have, we've received no communication or notice of SEPA or even the fact that this was going to be docketed. So it's kind of frustrating. So as I said, I went through about 250 pages, the first 251 pages of that document. And ultimately, when I got to page 251 and I saw a comment from a fairly prominent business owner in Cedar Woolley saying that he is opposed to this, I said that I think that's enough. You know, it's, it's quite clear that there's probably over 200 comments against and two comments in support. So I guess what I'm trying to say is the, the city does not support fully contained communities. The impact of them traffic-wise and, and the impacts on our housing and the impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods is tremendous. So a fully, what, what the proposal is to just allow fully contained communities. It's not specifically one fully contained community at Avalon. I mean, that's ultimately Avalon, the applicant's goal. But the process is first to allow them in the county comprehensive plan. And so that's the, the stuff that they're addressing now. But if it's allowed in the comprehensive plan, that means somebody could do a fully contained community pretty much anywhere in the county, not just Avalon. Someone could do it just, you know, the nightmare scenario for Cedar Woolley is if someone were to propose something like this just east of Cedar Woolley that would bring traffic and higher urban densities to that area. Well, without providing the adequate concurrency, concurrency meaning traffic, addressing traffic, addressing schools, addressing all of the things that the cities go through great lengths to address, to, to address our future growth. The fully contained community wouldn't be doing that. It's just a developer who wants to plot their land to allow for housing and some commercial development to serve some of those people, leaving it up to the county to then deal with all of the, the impacts of development. That would also, you know, if something like that were to happen east of the city, it would cause a lot of cross-city, cross-traffic through Cedar Woolley that we wouldn't have any control over. Or have a nominal amount of control over, and we would just, we would be forced to address the impacts of, of their growth. So it's been, been a little frustrating that the county is docketed a part of this without communicating with the cities, without looking for our support. So what we're asking for, that's why we're proposing this resolution, to say, hey, county, cities over here, are you gonna, are you gonna talk to us about this? Because we don't really support this. We've read through your comprehensive plan comments, and we see that there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are opposed. We're receiving comments just without any comment period, people sending comment letters to the planning department, the mayor, and city council members stating their opposition to this. And, you know, we find that actually very supportive of our position, and those comments have been included in your packet also. So that's why there's those random four or five comments at the end of your packet. Because people just felt that it's At the end of your packet, because people just felt that it's An important enough topic that they're just sending letters to their local Representatives. And I think that's really all I wanted to present on the issue. There's a lot of questions, I imagine, and I'm happy to answer those questions, I hope I covered most of them in my little presentation here. But the, the resolution itself states a lot of why we're doing it and what we're trying to achieve.
All right, thank you, John. Are there questions or comments for John?
Director Coleman, I was just wondering, is, I went through the comment list, and a lot of those names I recognize as people I spoke to As I was going through the community, and they're, they're definitely not in favor of it, would there be any reason why we would even have support for this? At all? I, I can't see any reason why this would even be something that
From the planning department's perspective, we're, we're absolutely against this, it's, it's poor planning. The, the cities are against it because they're, what they want to do is reallocate population From the cities to this To the, the fully contained communities, or And there's really no need for that, they're not demonstrating any need, they've provided some What I would describe as specious math in their application stating that The populations, the cities aren't handling the population growth. But they're really, you know, they, you can make statistics say anything you want, and that kind of feels like what, what they're doing there. We, as the cities collaboratively work together to address Growth for, in a 20-year window, and then every eight years or so, we We readdress those urban growth areas and, and make sure that we're addressing it accurately. This just feels like somebody wants to do a development because they have some land available to do so. And so they're trying to do an end around, around the growth management Rules and intent to achieve what they want to achieve.
Thank you so much, Director John.
Anyone else?
This is council member, I mean, I would have to say that I, I would agree with opposing this. I've personally been receiving emails stopped by people when I'm walking down the street. Also receive some phone calls, and people, you know, strongly opposing this, very much worried about the already Busy roads that we're dealing with, and, and the, the additional reach that the city's going to have to cover Simply because of where they're choosing to try to locate this stuff, and, and that does fall on the city Regardless of how they want to, to situate it, or, or state that the population is moving, and you know, this, that, and the other. They still have to come through, you still have to use the roads, you still, you know, all of that stuff still falls into play. But I have received quite a bit of response, unsolicited Emails and phone calls, and people stopping me on the street or in the grocery store just to let me know that they strongly oppose it, and so Just speaking for, for the constituents and, and my personal opinion on, on Where the city should be, I, I would say that this opposition would be a, a positive thing for us to support.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, John, are you there?
Yep. Okay, I appreciate that. Two things, I, I don't think FCCs, this particular one is a very good idea. But you're talking about concurrency. Does that go west of Cedar Woolley also, or because that seems like that's becoming Urban sprawl out there.
Oh, west of Cedar Woolley? So, the urban growth areas in the, in the county are Cedar Woolley, La Connor, Mount Vernon, Burlington, Anacortes, and then Bayview, which is the Housing area and industrial area around the airport. Those are the, those are the major urban growth areas, so if you're talking about sprawl around the Bayview Airport area That is, they're, they're planning for some development and, and commercial development in that area.
No, not there, Highway 20 between here and Burlington, that is becoming really a sprawl area now. You know what I'm talking about?
So, so our city limits go up to Collins Road, and then a little bit past Collins Road, the Burlington limits start. I don't know exactly how far, it's a round gardener, so That development along the highway in between Gardner Road and, and Collins Road Is not in any urban growth area, but I, you know, that's, that was Developed, a lot of that was developed in the 80s, 70s. Before we had growth management rules.
John, could you speak to the The infrastructure with these FCCs? What would we be looking at as far as the infrastructure?
Well, as I mentioned, under the, the, the Growth Management Act It just, an FCC is, what it says is A new fully contained community may be approved in a county planning under Growth Management Act if the criteria, including that not limited to the following are met. New infrastructure is provided for impact fees, new, new infrastructure is provided for and impact fees are established. So, it doesn't really specify what infrastructure is necessary. As a city, when we talk about infrastructure, we talk about sewer, we talk about Water, so you're not on wells, we talk about Curb gutter, sidewalk, stormwater, street lighting.
Does that also include emergency, fire, EMS, police, all of that?
Yeah, it doesn't really, it doesn't really speak to that, you know, when, when I, I mean, it could, it couldn't, it could imply I think when I talk about concurrency later in this section, it's only a paragraph long. You know, concurrency is just all of the, all of the infrastructure and, and services that Serve an urban area and to address the impacts. It's kind of, it's kind of an odd term concurrency, it's more of a concept than anything specific. But, yeah, that, they, they should have to provide for it. But, you know, they're not a city, so who's going to provide it? They'll be kind of wheeling and dealing, you know, will that require our, our ambulance service to To serve that area, because, you know, we'd probably be the closest city if it was Avalon. I know Burlington Wants to serve them with sewer in that particular one, so Burlington Has historically supported this because they stand to make one and a half times the typical sewer Fee by serving areas outside of their jurisdiction. But, the, the, there's just no, no real good plan for how they would provide those Services such as fire and police, and I mean, is, is the sheriff really going to be able to manage? They're already spread pretty thin, are they going to be able to manage a, a house, a large housing development Outside of, you know, several miles from their, their base? It, it, it just sets up a situation where the other cities Are forced to address the impacts of a fully contained community.
And taking away from our community at the same time.
John, this is Councilman Owen, I have a question for you. What are you looking for? Are you looking for a motion to, for, or a motion against, or Or the council to give the mayor the authority to write a letter and maybe Each of us sign it, again?
In, in the, in your packet today, there is a memo, and with, and attached to the memo is a proposed resolution, so We're looking to pass that resolution, asking the, the county to Involve the cities, first of all. And, and study this issue further and follow the, the proper rules for Processing amendments to their own comprehensive plan.
And, and Councilman Owen, this is actually, it's a first read, so there really isn't any action required tonight unless The council chooses to do so, but this is just a first read.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, one more time, sorry. So basically, the county is just blown off scog. Skagit County or government, you know?
Well, they're not abiding by the GMA as it's written, correct, John?
What we've written and what, what the cities feel is that the county is not following our Our agreed upon procedures for adding, for making changes to the county comp plan that address Fully, that address countywide policies, countywide planning policies and urban growth area allocations. So we don't feel that they're following the right process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman McGoffin, yeah.
I just wanted to put my support in for passing this amendment to oppose the FCCs. I've also received a lot of emails, apart from the ones that were included in opposition of it. One of the follow-ups I had with Greg that I thought was interesting, when I asked him why he was so opposed to it. He said he likes the idea of incorporating the growth in the cities, but One of the feedback that he had was, what he would like to see is more green space in the city as part of our growth. So I think that's something that maybe we can, your planning committee to incorporate. But John, I did have one question for you, it seemed like this passed 3-0 at the county level, is that correct, to include it in the docket?
So, what they, what the county's done is they've put on the docket a portion of the, the FCC Proposal, what they, they're kind of skirting around the part where they would have to change countywide planning policies. So they've taken this project request, which was requested by Bill Stigovitz. Stigovitz, apologize if I get his name wrong there. And they, they've elected to put part of it on the 2021 docket, which means now it's They're going through their formal process of hearings through the, their planning commission. And we don't feel that this is the proper way for them to do this. There, and so that we're stating opposition as much, they haven't approved anything. But they're, they have put it on their, their work schedule, basically, for the planning commission to review.
Gotcha. Has anybody talked to the commissioners as to why they went this route? It seems like it was
Has to do with housing, that they feel that there needs to be housing and trying to keep people within Skagit County. Not wanting them Because if people are working outside of Skagit County, then they're, they're spending their money outside of Skagit County. So it's trying to keep people and the monies, our tax dollars and whatnot within the county. So, part of it, so a good portion of it's housing, which You know, we hear that all the time, there's a great need for housing, and then also keeping the monies within the county.
Is that something that we as a city can help kind of make a priority this year of managing growth wisely? Helping to, to keep the growth in the cities, you know, we also have to be a little bit open to You know, allowing growth to happen too, is there a way that we can find that happy medium? So that the county doesn't feel it's, you know, on them that the cities take responsibility to?
Yeah, we could do that, I, I guess I could, I, I would say we could almost make an argument that we are Actually doing quite a bit here in Cedar Woolley, we not only have A housing authority where I believe it's 180 units that we're actually supporting low-income units. But there is also a massive amount of growth and development and building that's going on here, and Most of it, you know, medium range, we don't have anything that's really extravagant homes, expensive homes. So, I guess, in, in my opinion I, I would say that we're, we are doing a lot here, but certainly Councilman McGoffin, that's a, that's a conversation that we can have and talk about that, absolutely.
And on the flip side of that too, if we were having these people here and we're talking about wanting to be More green and, in the fact of people living and working in their communities, we also have to have the industry to support that. That means we have to have the jobs, we have to have the, the industries to come in here and have the jobs available for these people that are living here to work. Because right now, I, I know everybody that I have talked to that has moved here Is not moving here for a job, they're moving here Because it's a cheaper, safer, nicer place for them to raise their families than Seattle. And they're willing to commute, or they're working from home, and so their dollars are not Still not being spent here on the day-to-day, they're still not coming out and In, they're in our community, yes, they lay their heads here, their kids may go to school here, but they're not working here, they're not having their lunch here, they're not You know, grabbing, stopping at the local store to grab something unless they're here on the weekends with their families, because they're working out of town. And so that's one of the things that, in my personal opinion. And in talking to quite a few people around here that have moved to town, is that We need to, we need to be focusing on some business development, bringing people into town And, and putting those dollars back into our businesses and into those pockets and keeping that circulated, because without that, we become a low-income Housing community with no industry to support it, and that's a downward spiral.
Yeah, we do have some good industry here, something that we've been working on, both Charlie, Debbie and I, is Economic development, and you're going to be hearing more about that, so that's Yeah, that's something that we want to put into play for 2022.
I just wanted to put in my two cents, I'd agree with Sarah that we definitely need to get some more industry in here, but As far as fully contained communities, I've not heard from a single person who was in favor of this. It seems like a reckless choice from what I've seen in other places that have had fully contained communities, it seems like it's gone very badly In a number of places. I think that it would be much more responsible to stick to the growth management plan, and I almost feel like this isn't firmly worded enough To the county stating that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman McGoffin, did you have a comment?
I just had two quick things, do we know what the total supply of added houses in Cedar Woolley was for 2021?
Well, I don't have that, John, do you have that?
Not off, I just don't recall.
Okay.
It, it's a little, it's a little tricky because The 2021, the 2021 figures Got lumped in with the decennial population count, and So, the county, the, the state had originally given us a number saying we grew by, you know, X amount of residents Between April 1st of 2020 and April 1st of 2021. And then the decennial numbers became available to them, because there was a delay at the fed, federal level of getting those decennial numbers out. And so then, that caused the population to go up significantly, not based on You know, new growth, but based on better counting, because The way, the, the way the Office of Financial Management, which is our state office that handles population, the way they do it is they look at How many people, how many new houses are in each city? And how many homes were demolished, and then they do Account of how many people are in like group homes such as, such as The Job Corps. And so they get real numbers from places like that and assisted living facilities, those group quarters. And they, and they start with the, you know, the decennial count, so back in 2010, they had a number of X. And then they add to that every year for every, for all the new houses and new population that they see. And then when we got to the 2020 population, they did another count, and they found that over those nine years of counting that They didn't get it perfectly accurate, and that's why it's all just estimates, so we start with the 2020 count, and that did That raised our population, those are still preliminary numbers that aren't out for, for final Review, final posting yet. But so it's a the the answer is with many planning things is it's complicated. But I I I want to say it was or it was it was uh like one or two hundred residents before the the twenty twenty decennial census was added into that.
Okay, thank you. Uh I just think it'd be good to have those on hands for when the conversation with the county comes that you know, we're doing our part. I feel like Sejro Woolly, we did a great job. I mean, John, your department, especially with all the permits you guys handled this past year. Um I think we're helping with the housing problem here. You know, we had a lot of growth, a lot of new developments. And I think if the county is looking at keeping people here, I think Sejro Woolly did a good job this past year of adding more housing units and communities. And I just think having a number that we could say this is how many we added would be helpful. Uh the other thing I just wanted to mention real quick to Councilman Diamond Diamond's point was do we know what businesses have like a threshold of housing or people that will come to a city once they have that number? I know that some grocery stores um operate that way where they won't consider a city until it reaches a certain threshold. Are other businesses like that where if we hit that, we can go out and solicit that, you know, we're big enough to support your type of business? Do you want to come to Sejro Woolly? Have we looked at those types of numbers?
No, we haven't, but I can tell you that we have had with the opportunity zones that came about three years ago. Um so I was doing a lot of presentations regarding that, and we did have several businesses that came um looking at our town. However, um because of a lot of different cir- cir- circumstances and situations, they were not a good fit. And we did recommend them to the port, and the port actually has been working with some of them. So um it's kind of cool that we have that relationship. We have a really good relationship with the port. And um I do meet with them once a month, and it it's a very good rapport. Um but no, we don't have that. We do know that we would like to see some technology. Um I was sharing with um Councilman Burns that my hope, my vision for the city is that I do hope we bring in businesses that are um in line with a lot of what we have already inspired here, and that's the technology. We have businesses that have cutting edge tech techno- technology, and we have businesses that have um started out with something pretty simple and just really advanced it into something sophisticated. So those are the kinds of businesses that we're really hoping to attract. Um we are working with E-Desk. Um with E-Desk, we are letting them know what kind of businesses we're what kind of technology, manufacturing, what kind of businesses we're looking for. And definitely, we are looking for something that will um provide um several uh um employees. They'll they'll hire several employees so that people can stay here. Um when I ran for council, I ran on that same format that I wanted to see Sejro Woolly get ready um for the businesses that were coming so that we were prepared and not catching up. So and I I think that we're doing a pretty good job of doing that. And the second thing was that it would be a place where people could actually live, work and play here. That's what I wanted, and that's what I stated in my um statement, and I believe it was also in the brochure that um I put out. But that's that's what I'm really hoping for. I know that a lot of you are looking for the same thing, which makes me excited about this council. I know that we're all on the same page regarding that. So um I believe we're going to be able to move forward and do some good things. So excellent questions, great comments. Um I greatly appreciate it. And uh I I I know uh Debbie Burton, Charlie Bush, and I know they're they're appreciating hearing this too. Because as I said, we're wanting to uh really get ourselves out there in a way where we can start pulling people in and make them interested in our community. Yeah, so.
Madam Mayor, if I can say something too.
Yes, Mr. Lavaca.
It would be great if we're able to decouple the housing of Sejro Woolly from the FCCs in a way that we're not getting our hand kind of squeezed to increase our housing faster than we're prepared to do to accommodate not doing an FCC. So I would I would like myself would like to see those not related, see our growth happen in relation to the business and what we have that we can accommodate. Like if you were a business and you only have a hundred jobs and then you're building up your business that you can accommodate ten more jobs, you're not going to hire thirty more people for that or fifty more people. You're only going to hire the ten you can you can accommodate and and provide for. And so our community, in a way in my mind, seems to be that same way. If we can only accommodate and grow so fast, it doesn't mean we need to put up a house for every single person who wants to come here. Or that we should have our hand kind of twisted in the way that, hey, either we do an FCC or you let us just build your community up at home, right? I think we, you know, got the comprehensive plan and uh as I mentioned to you earlier, having a uh a five year plan of or or something that's more consistent with the growth opportunity path.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions?
As far as the population things go, I I couldn't hear you all that well, but you know, the 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 count, the the cities, the urban growth areas, existing urban growth areas in the city, in the county are capable, uh we've all done our planning to make sure that we're capable to handle our projected population growth over the next twenty years. We don't see that there's any need or even any good argument that uh that fully contained communities are necessary to accommodate the population growth. But we we see that as a really a false uh false logic that they're proposing in their application, because we've already done the studies and showed what we need to do to accommodate the growth. Um they they those the people that are proposing the FCCs are going to depend on the county to then do all that hard work of of accommodating the the impacts of the growth at an FCC. And counties just really aren't designed to be able to handle urban growth. So there like there there's really no need for the FCCs to accommodate the the county's projected growth. The urban growth areas are already doing that.
Thank you very much. Is there a reason why we can vote on this um tonight if everybody's in agreement to oppose it? Or is there room for more discussion?
That's up to the council. Is there is there a motion? We can move forward with it and see if the council wants to move forward with it.
I would like to make a motion. I would make a motion to to vote to oppose it.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so there is it's for resolution um ten eighty four twenty two, is that right? Um and and I have a motion on the floor. Was that by you, Councilman Lavaca? You made a motion to move forward with resolution to approve resolution ten eighty four twenty two?
Right.
Okay, and it was seconded by Councilman Burns. Um is there any more discussion or any questions?
Madam Mayor, what what is the motion exactly to uh not approve of the FCC?
So it's a resolution ten eighty four twenty two expressing our concern and opposition to the potential authorization or support of the fully contained communities by or within Skagit County.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and that is on your in your packet. It's on page thirty seven, for those of you who want to look it up. Okay, so there is a first and a second to approve this motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, so motion ten eighty four twenty two carries. All right, thank you. And thank you for the discussion. Thank you, John. Great information. And thank you, council. That was um was a very good discussion. Thank you. Um I'd like to move on now to uh being the first of the year and whatnot. I kind of like to do a check in or a round robin or however you want to call it. And I I'll start with our newest um council member. Welcome, Councilman Burns. Do you have a report or anything that you would like to share this uh fifth day of the new year?
Uh not much of a report. Hope everybody had a great Christmas and New Year. Um I hope to do good things over the next four years with the council. I look forward to working with all of you. Um I appreciate the support that I got from the community and that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca, we'll go to you.
Um well, my report is I've had a very good time being on the council so far, and I really appreciate the welcoming from all the directors and their willingness to speak with me and get to know me. Um I would like, I've heard from a lot of people concerns with the mandates of the vaccine in particular. And so I said, well, we can't do much about that with the city. But I'm wondering if there's a way as a city, we can draft a letter signed by the councils or a majority to submit over to the county, the same that we're doing with this letter that we just proposed in opposition of mandatory vaccines, but with having still the education, the ability for people to get vaccines as they want, whenever they want. But just not the mandate for the citizens of Sejro Woolly or even the the employees. Now, that probably won't go nowhere, obviously. It's just us voicing our our opinion in behalf of those people, so.
Is this something that you would like to go to the governor or who were you thinking it would be sent to?
No, it's just go to the county. Their their county as a city. And if other cities maybe see that as something that they're just want to have that opportunity for people that get the medical needs, they want to have the protection they need or that that they decide to have. But that they aren't forced to do something that they don't feel comfortable with. And that our our employees aren't forced. Now, obviously, that's not going to change the law. It's not going to change the mandates that are there, but it just voices a letter of of opposition to say it's not something that we are in agreement with for the citizens of Sejro Woolly. And maybe that's uh not a shared view amongst the council, but that's something I said.
Yeah, that would be something that you would probably we'd probably want to have a discussion with the council to see if they'd like to move forward with that. Um is that something that we could bring forward, Charlie? I don't know, next week or the following council meeting?
Yeah, something that we could bring forward. Uh I'd probably go for the the following council meeting, although it may be timely. Uh if Nick has a draft, that would be a helpful start.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Anything else before I move on?
No, thank you so much. Happy happy new year.
Happy new year to you too. Thank you. Um Councilwoman Diamond.
Um I don't have a whole lot tonight. I'm surprised and of the nomination and appointment there, but um so I will step in and and enjoy a year of of learning that role there as mayor pro temp. Um outside of that, I am just wanting to, and I will again next week, express my thanks to the city crews that were out there working in the freezing cold um snowy roads. I myself was up at six AM driving to work every day, and um they were out there working hard and in the snow and making it making it uh the roads passable for everybody. And it was just so nice to see um the police and fire crews that were out with a lot of different calls due to the weather conditions and stuff as well. And so I applaud the city and in and the crews and and everybody for getting out there and taking care of business and doing what they can to keep the citizens safe and and being able to enjoy a white Christmas. Um uh hoping nobody had too many frozen pipes. We only had one, so we that was easily taken care of. Um and uh outside outside of that, I don't have a whole lot, aside from the FCC stuff that was coming at me um timely for our study session today. And yeah, I just hope everybody has a happy new year, and I'm very excited about this uh this council moving forward. Um and I'm very interested in to see what uh what comes up with uh Nick's suggestion here, and and I'm interested in seeing where that goes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, um and and I appreciate you acknowledging the city crews because they did work hard and uh Director Freiberger, I believe, said that there was even one morning, they were up at like three or three thirty in the morning out there. So this is a dedicated crew. They are a great team. So thank you, Councilman Diamond, for 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 acknowledging them. Um Councilman Owen.
Yes, I guess all I have to say is Happy New Year to everyone, and I'd like to give a big thanks for the road crew. The city, they've done a great job of keeping their streets passable and uh that crew always does a good job, whatever whatever emergency comes up, they're right there, and I appreciate them. Uh and welcome to you, uh Mr. Councilman Burns. I did have a chance to say I'd have a cup of coffee with you, and I enjoyed it, and I'm sure you're going to make a great councilman. And uh Mr. Lavaca, I've never met you, and it would be good if I could get together with you and have a cup of coffee, and we could talk a little bit at your at your convenience. Uh you have my phone number on the card, so give me a call. I'm I'm here to meet you anytime. I'm one of those old people that uh that's retired, but uh i- if you'll uh make time in your schedule sometimes, and we'll just meet and have a cup of coffee, and I'll get to know you a little better, right? I'm one of those old outs, you know, that uh I stay I stay on Zoom because I don't want I don't want this virus and uh I don't want it anybody else to have it. I hope the city, the people that are affected in the city, I hope they recover and and get back to work. So anyway, welcome to you two and uh congratulations to our new pro temp, and I'm sure she's going to do a great job, and that's all I got to say. And uh Happy New Year to you, Jill. You you're a great person.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Kestee.
Well, I'd like to welcome Joe. Um and I really like what Nick had to say, so I would really like to hear more about that. Um and also echo Sarah and Chuck in how wonderful our crews are doing, and um Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. And Councilman Allen.
Okay, I'm the village uh buffoon, so I'm taking a merry or Happy New Year to everyone. Do you want this hat? Or this hat? Or this hat on the next meeting? Which one do I wear? Anybody opposed to the Huskies or Cougars?
I think it should be a cub hat.
I've I've got one in the room. Okay, I've got two, actually. So anyway, I'll do that next week. Anyway, Happy New Year. Uh I want to thank Charlie for giving me a call today. He answered a few questions uh or concerns, if you will. I'm glad that the uh council worked so well tonight doing the pro temp, and I I just think we have a great group of people, and I'm just glad to be part of Sejro Woolly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Um Councilman McGoffin.
All right, thank you. Um I want to echo Glenn's Happy New Year, and I I agree, we have a great group this year. I think we're gonna get a lot done and have a good time. Um I did talk to Charlie about one thing, and maybe Charlie can speak up to it as well. Um the first two years, um it was a little bit of a gray area with the Public Meetings Act between, you know, talking with people, texting, calling. Um I think that's something this year I'm trying to focus a lot more on uh. And Charlie, maybe you can speak a little bit uh more to that point.
Yeah, I would just say uh we're happy to help uh provide some training and some clarifications regarding Open Public Meetings Act uh for the council. Uh we've got a number of folks, a couple of folks who are new, and we've got a number of council members with uh in just a year or two of experience, uh so uh it might be a really good time to do that, and we're already talking with a number of you, I think all of you, about uh a strategic planning retreat coming up. That might be a good time for us to uh, you know, to insert uh such a training, or we could find another time to do it. But uh yeah, we're happy to provide uh some additional support to you in that area.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Brendan? Okay, good. Thank you. Um Charlie, is there anything that you would like to share with the council?
Uh just keeping busy with uh, you know, COVID these days, uh on the rise, uh and writing policies related to that. Uh we're working on the uh twenty twenty two budget amendment uh here over the next few weeks. Look to get that to you in February, and we're also working uh hard on the American Recovery Plan Act and our plan for how to expend those funds. And when the mayor was referencing economic development, that's one of the areas where we're looking to pull some funds to do some special economic development work over the next few years. Uh and we've got other ideas as well, including some uh some investments in parks and uh and and a number of other projects and and uh things that need to get done that we're going to recommend to you. So we look forward to that conversation, and uh otherwise, we are all uh super busy, as as was mentioned, with um removal of uh snow and ice uh in public works, and of course, police and fire always keeping busy as well, and then the rest of the city.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Um I think I I think I just want to echo what everybody else was saying as far as Happy New Year. Um, I think I I think I just want to echo what everybody else was saying as far as happy new year. Um, I'm glad that you all came to the holidays safe, and I hope you'll continue to stay that way. Um, thank you for bearing with us as we have chose, or actually I chose to go. Um, Zoom this month with the rise in the Omicron. It's uh, there's a lot of cases that are happening. And um I I want everybody to be healthy and certainly didn't want to put anybody in a position where they might. Be exposed, so thank you for bearing with us during this. Uh, we'll just do it a month at a time, just see how it goes, so. We're just looking at doing it right now for January. Um, also want to thank the road crews for the time that they did put out. Um, I've already sent them a couple of emails. They're, they. Truly are an extraordinary group. They are, and um there are unsung heroes. So if you see them at all, I hope that you will extend a thanks and let them know how much they are appreciated. Um, I want to let this council know how much I appreciate you. Um, as I've shared with them, each of you, I'm very excited. About this council. I think we're going to be able to do some great projects. I think we're going to be able to develop some good policy. Um, the the conversation, the discussions are fantastic. I want to continue to encourage that. Um, you know, you 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 come prepared, you you have good questions and uh. That that's what makes a really good, solid team, and that's what's going to um help make this city a good city, build a good city, so. Um, thank you for all of that. And uh with that, I just want to say we'll see you next Wednesday, and thank you again for your participation tonight. Good night. We are adjourned.